Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 14, 2021 Marion City Council meeting. I'd like to start our meeting off this evening by asking everyone to please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Sizem.
Here.
Is your microphone on?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Debold.
Here.
Councilmember Hans.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Naff.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
I'm here via phone. I'm quite, I'm sick, so I don't want to infect everybody, but is there any way that someone could talk a little bit louder? I'm here, though.
Okay. Councilmember Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Okay.
Apologize for not having my mic on. Welcome, everyone, to our June 14, 2001 council meeting. Our next item on the agenda is public items, and members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note that individuals making public comments have a limited five minutes. In accordance with the governing rules and body, rules of procedure, the city reserves a right to refuse public comments that are personal, impertinent, or slanderous. So, at this point, since we are at the point where we're taking public items, if anyone has an interest to come up, in fact, let me, I think we have an agenda, we have someone that's signed up, Mr. Cook, you can come up first, and while he's coming up here, if you didn't get a chance to sign up for public comments after Mr. Cook's completed his comments, then you may have your opportunity. Mr. Cook, welcome to our meeting.
Welcome. Thank you very much.
Would you please give us your name and your address?
R.J. Cook. I live at 8709 West 47th Terrace.
Thank you.
I wanted to talk to the city council today just in reference to a recent problem. Last Friday, my neighborhood experienced a severe storm. The storm had high winds and rain. As of yesterday, at least one of my neighbors is still experiencing a power outage. My neighborhood cannot be the only one in Marion experiencing the same problem. This severe storm blew down several trees and limbs in our neighborhood. I spent Sunday helping my elderly neighbor, who was in his late 70s, clear up about a six-inch limb approximately 25 feet in length that landed on his fence and tore down the power lines to his house. Another neighbor has lost about half of a tree in his backyard. The tree is over three foot in diameter and about 40 feet tall and laying in his backyard. Part of this tree is the one that landed on my neighbor's fence. We cut all the limbs into four-foot lengths and placed them by the street. I would like to know when the city is going to assist the neighborhoods in picking up these limbs. The problem that we experience is that trash companies don't like to pick up limbs, and the city restricts us if we want to burn them. What options are available to us to remove these items? If the city, if the residents burn these limbs, they may create a fire hazard, and you have to get a burn permit to burn. So I would like to see the city partner up with the neighborhoods and pick up these limbs. A limited limb pickup by, run by the Public Works would be about the best option for all our residents. And I'll take any questions if you have any questions.
Actually, I'm glad you brought that up because under comments, we allow you to make comments, and we don't get into the question.
Okay.
So I presume we have your information. I think someone will be reaching out from the city to talk to you about this and talk to you about options and
Okay, great.
and kind of give you the rundown on that. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
All right, thank you.
See anyone else wish to come up and make a public comment? Mr. Frisby, welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
Sir, Al Frisby, 10121 West 59th Terrace. Two things. Number one, I'm very interested in the sustainability grant that you are going to pursue, so I'd like to know more about that. Number two is I want to thank Marion and Anna and the rest of them down there at the community center, following the governor's suggestion and mandate to wear masks at the appropriate time. I pushed and pushed and pushed for that, and finally it happened, and I just wanted to thank you for following through with that, to have masks at these community center, and, you know, thank whoever. We are out of that ballgame now, I think, so appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming to visit us, sir. Anyone else wish to come forward with public comments? Okay. Hearing none, we'll go into the consent agenda. We only have one item on the consent agenda this evening, and that's consider approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on May 24, 2021. So unless there are any questions or comments about that, I'll entertain a motion in a second. Bob Pape.
I'd move the council-approved consent agenda, item number one.
And do we have a second?
I'll second that. Scott Debold.
Motion made in second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Naff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. Next item is public hearing. This is a public hearing to amend the I-35 TIF district. Want to read a statement that comes from our governing body rules document, which talks about public hearings and the fact that they may be continued with a motion and a majority vote without further published notice if that is, if at that time and place for which the notice originally was given, the presiding officer specifies the time and place where the hearing will convene. Public hearings are officially open and closed by the chair, who's myself. Just maybe a quick comment. This is a pretty important part of our meeting tonight because we're thinking about amending a TIF district boundaries to allow for, for the development of the Kmart site. This site's set vacant, and I would say blighted for 10, maybe 10, eight or 10 years, and so as a city, we're trying to make this site a little more attractive to potential developers, and I think it's an important thing for us to consider. So, Mr. Dyer, would you come up and give us a presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Brian Dyer, Community Development Director, and just first, I'd like to say it's my privilege and honor to be the first staff member to make a presentation to you all live and in person, so bear with me. This is much different than being at home at my desk doing this, so hopefully this goes smoothly for everybody this evening. As the mayor mentioned, this evening, you all are being asked to consider in order to amend the I-35 redevelopment district. The amendment is for the purpose of bringing in the Kmart site into the I-35 district. Also this evening, we have Joe Sharano, a bond counsel from Cootec Rock Care, to help answer any questions on this issue, as well as city administrator Chris Engel also be able to help answer any questions that you all may have. So state statutes spill out the process for amending the I-35 TIF district. Really, the last part of this whole paragraph support that we need to pay attention to this evening, it says, "To amend the district plan, it shall be subject to the same procedures for public notice and hearing as required for the establishment of a district." You all, at your, one of your meetings last month, passed a resolution establishing today as the day for the public hearing. That resolution was sent to all the occupants and property owners within the I-35 TIF district. It was also sent to the Board of County Commissioners, as well as the Board of Education for Shawnee Mission. The notice was also printed in the legal record. Also, part of the process of considering amending this into the I-35 TIF district, it has to be an eligible area. Eligible areas per state statutes are either conservation areas or areas that are found to be blighted. You all received a blight study in your packet. First of all, apologize for the first study being sent out without the appendices. We've since revised that and provided you with the complete document that has all the appendices in there as well. So, just kind of going over the existing I-35 redevelopment district, just, the development district has been in place for a number of years. It starts at 75th Street and travels up I-35 on the west side until it gets up to Shawnee Mission Parkway, and then Shawnee Mission Parkway jumps over to the east side and continues on up to Johnson Drive. You see within the TIF district, there's a number of, of letters in there. Those are project plan areas. Project plans are subsets to the TIF, to a TIF district, to a redevelopment district. You can see a number of letters in there. The most recent experience the council's had with amending a TIF district and doing a project plan was Project Plan Area L, which is up there to the top right. You all amended the, your I-35 TIF district to create Project Plan Area L. What Project Plan Area L is, is what's for the development of the parking structure that serves the community center, as well as the library. So again, this evening, we're talking about the Kmart property. As you can see up on the map, it's project, it's the area M up there. It's important to note that includes the whole area except for the La Petite Academy. It's also important to note that obviously there's impetus for us considering it this evening. We've been in discussions with the developer, Drake, potential development, Drake Development, but it's also important to note that while those things are coincide or linked together, they're still separate issues. You have the development side of things, and then you also have the incentives, the public-private partnership side of things, which is the TIF district part, which is what we're considering this evening. So obviously, again, while there's impetus for this, really what we're talking about this evening is getting this area into the TIF district, and there's a number of good reasons for doing that. First of all, as we all know, it's blighted. It has topographical challenges. It's high on Shawnee Mission Parkway, falls off, falls off to the south, so it's obviously going to take an extensive amount of grading and dirt work to make the site redevelopable, as well as, as you also know, the Kmart property is in, the building itself is in quite a bit of disrepair. So I think it's safe to say that whether it's Drake or a different developer that wants to redevelop this site, it is going to take a public-private partnership. Again, as we zoom in a little bit closer to the project area, again, the area we're talking about this evening is bounded by Shawnee Mission Parkway in the north, Antioch Road on the east, 64th Terrace on the south, and then EB Avenue on the east, excuse me, west side. Again, that little portion down there at the southeast corner, that's La Petite, that is not being included in here. And again, as I spoke about earlier, project plans are subsets of district plans. So this evening up here, as you, as you consider amending the district plan, you're also making a new area, a new project plan area. You'll see an area there in the middle that says excluded for project, project area M, that is the Krispy Kremes and the Freddy's site, so those are not in the project area. They are in the district plan, so, but if a project plan would come forward to you at a later date, it'll include that whole area except for Freddy's and Krispy Kreme. Again, as I mentioned, obviously, we have a, a interest in redeveloping the site, but we're also have the district plan amendment, which we are considering this evening. Some of the potential next steps, kind of to show that there's still a lot of conversation that needs to happen, that will happen between now and if we did partner with Drake Development to do this area, to do the redevelopment of it. Some of the things are, have to create a redevelopment agreement with the developer. That's a contractual agreement between the city council and the developer that spells out what the city council expects, what the city expects the developer to do, what the city will, how it will perform, what its partnership with the developer will be, and also the developer does the same thing. So that's a very important document. That'll be something that we'll continue to work on if this continues, it goes forward. And as I mentioned, the TIF project plan, it's important to note that that is another public hearing that would be before the city council, and that's also the area in which we do a feasibility study. That's when you start getting more into the finances aspects of it and, and those types of part of it. Again, tonight, it's the district plan. That's really kind of the incentive, that's really kind of demonstrating and showing that the city feels that a property tax TIF is the best partnership versus something like a community, community, community improvement district, or otherwise known as CID. That is where you set up a district that charges more sales tax to finance a redevelopment. So again, bringing in the TIF district here, at this point in time, really sends clear signals that we feel that the best public-private partnership is via a TIF, a property tax TIF. Then that kind of is the TIF side of things. The other side of things is the actual development side, the planning side of things that you all are very familiar with as well. It's important to note that any development, redevelopment of the site most likely is going to require rezoning, a development plan, as well as a plat. Those are all things that your planning commission will be reviewing and sending on to you at a, at a later date, again, if we continue going forward with this. And it's important that the planning commission holds a public hearing on rezoning and development plans. So again, more opportunity for comments and discussions. And then how we typically try to make this work, craft this, these types of projects is to have, on your same agenda, have a number of items kind of coincide and come together. Those items would be consideration of a redevelopment agreement, consideration of a project plan, rezoning and plat, as well as a development plan. So there's a lot of things that still need to happen, a lot of opportunities for conversation to happen. Staff fully expects there to be, hopefully, a study session, planning commission, city council, also opportunities for residents, neighbors to have conversations about this. I would say that we are already in discussions with a potential developer, and reiterated to them that the city's expectation is that they have a neighborhood meeting, so they reach out to the neighborhood, get input from the neighborhood as well. So again, kind of in closing, I'd just say that staff feels that the area, for all the reasons, blight, topographical reasons, environmental reasons as well, for redevelopment, that is most likely going to need a public-private partnership, and the best way to facilitate that public-private partnership is through a property, property, property tax TIF, which is a mouthful to say. So that's, that's all I have. In conclusion this evening, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have before you have your public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Naff.
Do you know approximately how much the Kmart building is worth in its current condition, approximately?
Probably, in the blight study, we can get that. Let's see. I believe, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the appendix, I believe it's 1.3 million. That, excuse me, appraised, appraised is 5.2 million, so assessed is 1.3.
To be clear, that is not likely what the sale cost would be, that is what the appraiser has it.
Mr. Silvers.
I just wanted to thank you for including these images of the Kmart inside and out and the roof, because I didn't realize to what extent the disrepair was.
Yes, it is in, it's in a big state of disrepair, that's for sure.
Any other questions? Okay, well, hearing none, what I'm going to do is go ahead and open up the public hearing. So now is a time where any member of the public, if you want to get up and state any thoughts you have or comments regarding this, it's this issue, now would be the time to come forward. Come forward, sir. I will need you to list your name and address for the record.
Todd Weatherill, 6223 Slater. I had not prepared anything tonight. I was under the impression that there would actually be some kind of a proposal, we'd find out what was proposed for that site. I just have a general question about TIFs. So my understanding of the TIF is that those taxes are waived for some period of time? Is that, is that a general?
No.
No, okay.
That is not correct. If I'm incorrect here, I'll have Joe Sharano or Mr. Engel step in. In real, in real high-level terms, they're still assessed the taxes, but what happens is the difference between what the base tax rate is, say, they pay $1,000 in base tax, that's what the base rate, the improvements they, they create causes an increase to, they start paying $2,000 in taxes. So that difference between 1,000 and 2,000, that $1,000 is then made available to the developer for eligible expenses. Eligible expenses include property acquisition, include structured parking, include site, any kind of site work, things like that. It does not include the actual buildings for like a store or something like that. So that is very, in very brief terms, how a TIF district works.
So without getting deep into that, and I'm, I'm generally not opposed to TIFs, just to let you know, I just want to understand the impact of that. So if there is an impact on, sort of on the overall tax base or whatever gets collected by property tax, I guess my question would be, if this property's included within the development district, then does that have an impact on property taxes for the remainder of the community? In other words, there's, there, you have, you have a revenue stream that you're dependent upon, and does that somehow affect your revenue stream?
It should, it does not affect taxes for everybody else around it. It really is self-funding for the most part, and again, if I'm incorrect, I'll let, I'll let Joe, Mr. Sharano will definitely step in, please do. So, so no, it really does not. It really is kind of encapsulated in that, and that's part of, the big part of the redevelopment agreement. It, redevelopment agreement is a contract that allocates those TIF dollars from that site to refund or to reimburse the developer for their improvements. So it does not include anybody out, any other properties outside of that, so it doesn't affect the taxes on properties outside of that. Now, obviously, there's a long-term gain potentially to this, once it, the TIF goes away, because they are a limited time period, so once the TIF goes away, they go back on to what we call the general fund, so it goes back into the general fund. So obviously, it increases the overall level of funding in the general fund, and then potentially could have a positive impact on other, on taxes outside of that area, so.
Okay. So another question, there, there have, best from my knowledge, been two, two other proposals, there may have been more. The block company had proposed something, I think, in 2019, 2017, something like that, and then, of course, the Menards project. So were either one of those, was there any kind of public component requested out of those development proposals?
Yes, the, yes, the Menards project, I believe, is 2014. The Menards project did go forward essentially about to this exact spot on their request for public-private funding. That's, then they, for whatever reasons, Menard has decided not to go forward with the project. So they got to this phase, this state, the block proposal never even got to this state. It was simply some discussions they were having. So really, the Menards one was only, really the only official TIF request, and it got to this point, and this is about the point in which they decided not to go forward with the project.
So if, if this TIF is approved, is there a plan in, I'm assuming that, that, that the, the Drake company has been working on a plan for this, I mean, they've been dialoguing with you about what, what this would actually look like. If this moves forward, what would be the next step? When would we actually see a plan proposed for that site? And are they waiting for this approval before they do anything further?
Yes, to your first part, and then yes to your second part. Right now, again, scheduling-wise, and this is all very subject to change, just can't emphasize that point enough, it's very subject to change. If it continues to go forward, really, the chance that they'll, the first big opportunity to put out there what they're wanting to do, they'll submit a TIF application, I believe they may have already have done that, which has some, some overall details, but not really specific details into what they're doing, it's more financial stuff. It does have some details into what they're proposing, but the big opportunity that will be for them to really show, you know, the buildings, the structures, the types of businesses and things like that, will be when they do a planning commission submittal, and also a little bit in the TIF project plan, but the big thing will be a planning commission submittal. Right now, you know, it, we're thinking it might be in August, planning commission, again, all subject to change, so, but what will happen is, as I mentioned earlier, we have already communicated to the developer that they need to have a neighborhood meeting. So the Vernon Place folks will obviously get notification of the neighborhood meeting, and so there'll be that, and then also, like I said, planning commission will have a public hearing on what they want to do, and it's, it's looking like, if it goes forward as we have, as we have scheduled out, probably be August. If you give me your name and email, I'll be happy to let you know when those kind of things happen, that's certainly not a problem. But that's, that would be the area, that would be the time when they would roll out again, details on what the buildings look like, what they're planning on putting in there, really a lot of specific details at that point in time.
Okay, terrific. Great. Thank you very much.
Like I said, when you get
I, I did sign in.
Oh, okay. Do you leave your email there?
Yes, I did.
Oh, excellent. I'll be happy to put it down and kind of, you know, let you know as things happen.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward for public hearing?
Al Frisby, 10121 West 59th Terrace. Two questions. I believe Kia had a 19-year-long TIF, is that correct?
Ikea?
Kia.
Okay.
Something like that.
Okay. How long is this one, predicted?
That is something that will be negotiated out as part of
Okay, so you haven't done that yet?
We've not got to that level, no.
All right. Second one. We had a problem with Menard backing out because of a certain problem that I won't go into. Do, does the new prospective owner know about the problem that Menard had with the property?
Well, my understanding with Menards is, excuse me, that the grading issues were really what, what got, our, our understanding is that the current developer is well-versed in that. We've obviously discussed it with them as, as, you know, the initial conversations have happened, so they should be well-versed in it. They should be very well-versed in it, yes.
All right. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close out the public hearing. And this is a period of time where we do council follow-up questions. Mr. Silver, do you have a question or comment?
Yeah, it, it does kind of tie into the, the first question that was asked by Mr. Weatherill. I was just curious, based on the paperwork that was sent to us, there hasn't been taxes paid on that parcel since 2018, which totaled almost $450,000. So in my mind, developing this, and I've always been somewhat against TIF, but I'm learning how important TIF can be, and getting a developer in there and, and developing this, to me, seems like a way better option for us than not receiving money on this parcel through taxes. So I, I, I understand your concern, and I used to have that concern, but on this project especially, I, I see the benefit. I guess that wasn't a question, but
It was a comment. That's good, too. Whitney?
I actually do have a question about the delinquent taxes, because I just have their tax records up. So the 2018, 2019 delinquent property taxes would not be included as part of any TIF project going forward, correct? Would they need to catch up on that, or, oh, that separately, that wouldn't roll into the TIF?
They would probably be included in the price of the sale.
Okay.
So they, so the, generally how that works is they would, whatever the owner sells the property for, would include
Plus $449,000. Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure about that.
But, but that's generally how it would work. We don't know, we would not know
Yeah.
And just to add on a little bit to that, and it's not an excuse, it's not validating what they done, it, it's not atypical for how that's going. So, so again, I'm not validating it, not saying it's a good thing that that's what's going on, but it is not atypical that that's kind of the way that process rolls goes.
I just want to validate the question, make sure we all ask it, too. And then my other question is more of an acknowledgement that the, a TIF would not affect the property tax rate of any property around it, but should the property value increase in that area, it's likely that, based on county valuations or assessments, that property tax would, you would, might pay more even though your rate is the same because the value of property's going up nearby. Is that accurate?
That, yes.
Okay.
I believe, as I understand, you're, you're saying the indirect benefits of redevelopment would raise
Property value nearby.
That would, yes.
But the rate would stay the same, because that can be confusing sometimes when people get bills.
That would be, that would be an annual decision for the council to decide the rate, but yeah, the rate would not go up as a result of this, this project.
No. Just want to make sure that's clear. Okay. Thank you.
Bruce?
This is Councilmember David Neal, and I, I have a question also.
Okay, Mr. Neal, go ahead.
I couldn't hear all the answers, so I, I apologize if I am answering I couldn't hear all the answers, so I I apologize if I am answering asking a question that's already been answered. But the the tax delinquency that was just talked about, is that something that can be paid for through the TIF? Or is that something that the property owner has to make has to cure prior to moving this forward, moving any any development forward on this site?
If your question was if the back taxes would be reimbursable through the TIF, me paraphrasing. If it was part of the purchase cost, yes. If if we would if the if the property would have been, say, $10 million, but it ends up being $10.5 million because they roll the cost of the taxes into the final sale price, the final sale price of $10.5 million, and those are just made-up numbers, would be a reimbursable expense via TIF. Did that answer your question, Mr. Neal? Hopefully.
Yeah, I think I think that does answer the question, yes. Thank you.
So only indirectly, not directly, they could paying off prior property taxes is not a reimbursable expense?
Did you have another question?
Thank you.
Mr. Neal?
No, that at this stage, that's really the only this general question I, you know, I had about this this group of tracks. So no, I'm good.
Mr. Caldwell, do you have a question?
I just want to point a clarity. Those property taxes will be paid to the county and distributed out to the appropriate places.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Mr. Pape?
Mayor, this just be a comment. Actually, we we talked a little bit about CID or capital improvement districts, and currently, just for the record, Merriam has no none of those districts existing in Merriam. My preference as as a councilperson is that we don't have any of those CIDs. So I think TIF is is more beneficial for redevelopment than having a capital improvement district. Just it seems more transparent to me, so I just throw it out there for comment.
Very good. Any other questions? Then I think I'll call the question if someone wants to make a motion. Mr. Pape?
I'd move the council waive the customary first reading of an ordinance adopting an amended I-35 district plan, Mayor.
Okay, so this first motion is not to approve, but to waive first reading. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, sir.
We have a motion made and second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Naff?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Pape?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Debold?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, then my next question will be, does anyone wish to go forward with the next item and make a make a move? Go ahead.
Mayor, I'd move the council approve an ordinance adopting an amended I-35 district plan.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that. My cutoff somebody, I apologize, so.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Naff?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
As this is the first step in trying to redevelop this this important tract, I vote yes and recognize that there are a number of other steps ahead. So I vote aye.
Councilmember Pape?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
There will be a lot of details to work out in the future, and I know that bringing this piece of land into the TIF district is not reliant on any specific deal in the near future, any specific project in the near future. So knowing that and that we can have tougher conversations later, I'm really excited to say aye.
Councilmember Debold?
Aye. Excuse me, aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, we're going to move into the mayor's report. I've got a couple other items in addition to these I want to talk about, but we're going to stay on course with what's on the agenda. And the first is a proclamation declaring June 21st as LGBTQ Pride Month. And I've got a proclamation, I'll read this, so please bear with me. Whereas, the month of June is designated as LGBTQ plus Pride Month, and it commemorates the Stonewall Revolution, excuse me, Stonewall Rebellion that occurred during the weekend of June 27th through 29th, 1969, in New York City, New York, that gave birth to the modern lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender civil rights movement. The month of June also marks a time when all those committed to justice and equality celebrate the notable achievements and outstanding service that lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and other Americans make to our city, state, and nation. And whereas, LGBTQ pride is defined as the positive stance against discrimination and violence towards lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, jector, queer, and others to promote their self-affirmation, dignity, equality rights, increase their visibility as a social group, build community, and celebrate sexual diversity and gender variance. And whereas, individually and collectively, members of the city of Merriam's LGBTQ community contribute greatly to neighborhood revitalization, economic vitality, arts and culture, and the social fabric of our city, county, state, and country. And whereas, the city of Merriam prides itself on inclusiveness and protects its residents from discrimination and harassment based on race, color, sex, religion, disability, age, marital status, place of birth, families with children, sexual orientation, or natural origin. And we are committed to continued social progress and the cause of human rights, celebrating the great diversity of our community. Now, therefore, I can insist, and by virtue of the authority vested me as the mayor of Merriam, Kansas, to hereby proclaim June 2021 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the city of Merriam and urge all citizens to join in in ending prejudice everywhere that it may exist, respect the rights of all people, and celebrate the diversity and richness of our city and country. Proclaim this 14th day of June 2021. Very good. That was a tough one to read, too. I might have to have to work on that one. Okay, the next is consider approval of an ordinance adopting an amended, I'm sorry, confirm the appointment of the downtown Merriam Planning Sustainable Places Grant Committee. Mr. Engel, you've been working on this with me, and why don't you give us an update on that?
Sure. Sure, thank you, Mayor. As council is aware, the city received funding for a PSP, Planning Sustainable Places, grant for Merriam Drive between Johnson Drive and Waterfall Park. As part of that, there is a robust community input portion to receiving those grant fundings. It's going to require several different levels of public participation, from the very broad, which would just be the general public that would show up at several public meetings that we would likely have at the Merriam Community Center, all the way down to a working group, working group being the ones that would actually help the consultant most closely, probably on a monthly basis. So we sought nominations from the council about a month ago for people that they would like to see on there, gauge some interest of members of the council, and also went out to members of the business community to ask them their interests, since this is clearly going to affect the folks in downtown along Merriam Drive. And in consultation with the mayor, we've put together a committee that I think is a pretty diverse committee. I think it's a pretty fantastic committee, to be quite honest with you. It's got members of it's got the chair of our planning commission, chair of our park board, it's got the the chair of our 5701 committee, people that are on boards. It also has equal representation from business owners and business interests along Merriam Drive, as well as four council members and four staff members. So the item before you tonight is essentially the approval of the mayor's appointment of that committee that we would imagine would probably meet about eight times between now and the end of the year to help guide the future progress of what Merriam Drive could be and entail for the next 40 or five years, 40 or 50 years, really a continuation of conversations that we've had as part of the 5701 study, conversations that we've had of the recently completed and approved 2040 comp plan. So I think this is just a little bit deeper dive. And as the council is well aware, we have funding for cars projects that will be done along Merriam Drive. So this is the perfect time to come up with a vision for what Merriam Drive could look like before we go in there and replace the streets in two years. So this will really help inform that process.
Yeah, it's going to be exciting to get that group together and find out where they go with it, so I'm very pleased with it as well. Anybody have any questions about the reason why we have this committee? Mr. Silvers?
Again, I don't have a question, I have a statement. I'm really disappointed that I missed the email and responded late, so if by any chance a city council member ends up dropping out, I would love to be there to fill their spot.
Absolutely. And those those meetings, the the working committee meetings, those are public meetings. That information will be on our website. So even if not, please come. We the more the more people that can know what we're doing and the better it is, more people we can get excited and have buy-in, but we'll we'll keep you in mind. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I want to attain a motion then on this issue. Bob?
Mayor, I'd move the council confirm the mayor's appointment of downtown planning Sustainable Places PSP committee.
Second? Whitney?
Sure, Mayor, I second that motion.
Yeah, well, I'll look your way before I ask for the first next time. How's that? So we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Naff?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal? Councilmember Pape?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Debold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. I had a couple of add-on items. Oh, wait a minute, make sure I'm not getting ahead of myself. Okay, a couple of add-on items, and we'll get into the next ones. First of all, last Thursday, myself and a number of people in this room were were very fortunate to get to be a part of a ribbon-cutting for a new piece of equipment in our city, which I think sets us apart from from just about other any every other city in the world, in fact, because we got the opportunity to put to use a WeGo Swing piece of equipment, which is, for those of you who don't know, is a a device basically that allows people who are wheelchair-bound to utilize a swing, much like a person who isn't wheelchair-bound, and and kind of enjoy the same types of fun that you get from those types of activities. And again, we we oftentimes overlook those people who are unable to have the same freedoms and opportunities as those of us that are not disabled. So it was a great opportunity. We had a lot of people there, good press, and I want to thank Anna and her folks for making that happen. You did did a wonderful job. I can't wait to see how that is utilized in the future. The next item is is kind of a bittersweet item. We had a retirement that was effective, I believe, today.
Today.
Of someone who was kind of behind the scenes, but at the same time, very important in terms of our operation. Donna Shirley, who worked for Public Works as administrative assistant, retired after 26 years and two months. And I just wanted to mention that I remember the first few days when Donna was working here, in fact, we weren't in our new Public Works building at the time. And I also remember that our Public Works director at the time was having problems getting in some good help for a while there, and we were very lucky to get her to apply and take the job because she made it her own. She was she grew up in Merriam, Kansas. I understand she was she was a student at the elementary school before it was Irene B. French Community Center. She was also a Candy Striper Shining Mission, wasn't even a medical center back then, I guess, was just hospital. But more importantly, she made sure that the day-to-day operations of the of the Public Works Department went on in a smooth manner. And more than that, as she grew into the to the job, she really almost took a motherlike position. The the people that worked for her, she felt were their families, and she was very close to all of them. And she went through some tough times at Public Works when we changed administration down there, but she still stuck it out, and I'm sad to say that she's no longer with us, but but she did leave for a good reason, and she won't be forgotten. So we wish Donna Shirley good luck in her retirement. So I'm sorry she couldn't have been here this evening. So that's all I had. Let's go ahead and move into council items. First one's consider approval of an ordinance amending Chapter 59. Mr. Dyer?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Brian Dyer, Community Development Director again. This first thing is a great example of of staff in the field feeling figuring out a better way and more efficient way to do something. Currently, per ordinance, if you're doing work in the right-of-way, you need to pull a right-of-way permit. And if you're doing a driveway, you have to pull a driveway permit. So what ends up happening is you and someone redoing their driveway ends up getting two permits, a building permit and a right-of-way permit, and getting two inspections. Public Works inspector come out for the right-of-way inspection, a building official come out for the driveway inspection, and they pretty soon started conversing amongst each other and realized that they're all out there doing the same thing, inspecting the same thing, and it was an inefficient way to do things. But why do we do it? It's because our code requires it. So what the inspectors came to to the Public Works director, Mr. McDonald, myself, with was an idea of why can't there just be one permit for a driveway? Again, we are not talking expansion of a driveway, or we're not talking about a new driveway. We're simply talking about an existing driveway that's being replaced. So Mr. McDonald and I looked at the code, realized that we need to do an amendment to the code, so there could be just one permit. And so that's what this amendment is. This amendment essentially is exempting existing driveways from having to get a right-of-way permit. So that that means still, I can't emphasize this enough, it's a new driveway, an expansion, still need to get still going to have to get a right-of-way permit. The same inspections will happen. Our building official will do the inspections, we will issue building permits for these, so there'll be no loss of inspections and no loss of review of what's happening out there. It'll just be one less permit that someone ought to purchase and one less inspection that someone will have to call in. So this is simply the first reading of this item, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions from the council?
This is Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So this is this is Chris Hands, and I I truly support that this is a greater efficiency. I was a little surprised that the planning commission didn't have to do some kind of approval of us changing the ordinance.
The reason for that, Councilmember Hands, is because it is not in the zoning chapter. It is in the right-of-way chapter. So the planning commission does not review that portion of the code.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, first reading will. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Silvers?
I was just actually curious, when people take advantage of the of redoing their driveways when the sidewalks are being redone, does that just overwhelm your department with permit requests?
Actually, that is that is typically stuff that's done in the right-of-way, so that is not they do not come get a right-of-way permit from us, they, excuse me, do not get a building permit from us, they get a right-of-way permit, and typically, do they roll those up into the regular process of the sidewalk? So it's just part of the inspection process.
It is one of the three exemptions that are listed in the ordinance. Actually, number one, the three exemptions to the provision, we're adding the third one. The first one's contractors working on a construction or reconstruction of public improvements on behalf of the city. Wouldn't that be that would that would cover that? So, yeah, it's already an exempted activity.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move and talk about that in a couple of weeks again, if need be. Next. Next item is Lee Drive.
Yes, let me get this so we can all see. A couple of months ago, you all received public input during your first part of a council meeting in regards to the naming of Lee Drive. Obviously, what we're looking at here is the building here at 67th and, and Lee Drive. Used to be the Lee Building, obviously, it was owned and housed the Lee Jean corporate headquarters. Since then, Lee has sold the building, and a new company has purchased the building, and they put their headquarters there, Nation's Holding, and so the request from the resident was to rename Lee Drive. Staff looked at that. In order to fit the renaming of the Lee Drive, since it is a U-shaped street, we'd have to put three different street names on it to fit within the E-911 grid system that the county set up to try to get the streets to line up, match up as best as possible. So the city council can, by ordinance, rename the streets within your city, and that's what the ordinance is before you. The ordinance is to rename Lee Drive to EB Avenue, West 68th Street, and Slater Street, as you can see up here on the screen. And again, this is simply the first reading of this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Debold?
What's, what's going to be the cost to the city?
You have a mic on.
I didn't see that.
You have a mic on, sir.
Oh, I apologize, sorry. Cost to the city?
A few street signs, I believe.
Yeah, just some street signs. I haven't brought up a cost yet, but I can get that to you.
A minimal, I mean, we're not talking.
CarMax and Google Stacktime.
Minimal.
And, and I forgot to mention, your, your question reminded me, there is nobody who, there is no business or property that's addressed off of Lee Drive. That's what makes this so straightforward. If there's a business or something off Lee Drive, it'd be a little bit different situation. I will also say that I contacted CarMax as well as Nation's Holdings to make sure they were comfortable with the renaming, particularly CarMax, because they route their, their trucks up Lee Drive to get to their, their facility, so to make sure their dispatchers would know to, to properly route the drivers. CarMax general manager certainly had no problems with it, and he said, just send them the information, they'll get it to the dispatchers.
Whitney?
I do have a quick question about that, and that's a great example. So if I'm on GPS, right, and I have to turn in here, is it going to tell me to go straight on EB? Take a brief left onto 68th and an immediate right onto CarMax?
Not to get too deep into the world of mapping, but essentially, there, there are, there are two big players in the world of mapping of what you're talking about. Google's obviously one of them, and then there's another third-party company that works behind the scenes. We have no control over them. What should happen is this, if this is approved, it'll get put into the county's system. Those companies then, on a regular basis, scoop up all that information and update their systems. Whether that happens quickly, long-term, it, so, again, it's not something we control, something that should happen over time. It could be 12 to 24 months over time, but that is how it's supposed to happen.
Yeah, oh, excuse me, not used to this in-person thing. I would, my question is, is more along the lines of, does it make sense to have three different names going, and one you drive?
Yes.
It does. I mean, I'm looking at the map, and I see what you're saying and all, and.
Yes, it does.
The amount of people who are probably going to drive on that will probably not have those issues, but I just thought I'd bring it up because it might be one of those things where someone is like, why does this make sense in the future? So.
Yeah, no, it makes sense, again, because it fits, it actually lines up quite well with the county's E-911 grid, street grid system.
Thank you.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yeah, given that the county already has a Lee Boulevard way over there, getting rid of a Lee Drive way over here, I think, is a really good idea. I'm all for this.
Well, this is first reading, so if any burning questions come up between the next, now and the next two weeks, you'll have another opportunity. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
The last item under this particular segment is CIP update. Director McDonald, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let's see if I can find this on here. Again, so thank you, Brian, for sharing this with me. You've kind of had it all, all day. So this evening, I've got your June update for our CIP. We have our 2011, or sorry, 2021 million overlay program, and all the concrete work, paving, has been completed on those streets, which is Goodman, Craig, 55th Street, 55th Terrace, Perry Lane, 51st Place, and 51st Terrace. Weather permitting, we're scheduled to do pavement markings on Goodman tomorrow, and the next day it would be Craig. And then in the next few weeks after that, the contractor plans on doing some manhole adjustments and some dirt work, and we have sod scheduled for September, since we're out of our sod season for that program over there. Next one is our East Frontage Road, which is 67th to 75th. That is not, that shouldn't, let's go one more time. There it is.
There it is.
Thank you. It's our East Frontage Road, 67th to 75th Cars Program. The contractor is currently working on these substandard curb sections and sidewalks along that roadway. East Frontage is scheduled to be closed from 74th to 75th Street this Thursday and Friday for the pipe replacement. We tried to get them to do it on the weekend. They're having trouble getting concrete, so they have to do it during the week when they have drivers available. Unfortunately, Water One, there was a water main break also today on East Frontage Road between 69th and 70th Terrace, and so they are going to be closing that road down tomorrow to fix that water main. Good for us that it happened before the new pavement was down, so usually it happens afterwards, so that's kind of fortunate. But they're going to close that tomorrow to fix that, that portion right there. And our anticipated start date for our sidewalk repair program is in July. They're moving right along. And the last one I have is our West Vernon Engineering Study. BAC Roads has completed the existing conditions evaluation. We met with some of the residents out there and got some good feedback from them. They plan on start working on the proposals to come out next, and let's do about August, September. So I'm here to ask for any questions on these or any other projects that are going on.
Questions? I guess you're getting off lucky tonight.
All right, thank you very much.
I'd like to publicly thank Jim's staff for the work that they did trying to catch up with that grass. I'll tell you what, the grass was out of control from all that rain we had. They chased it for weeks, but they, I think they've gotten close to being back on top of it, so I want to make sure that we acknowledge the, the hard work of those crews.
Mr. Engel, since you're talking, do you have any staff items?
I don't have any staff items, I just want, I'm happy to see everybody in person again, welcome everybody back. Fifteen months was a long time. It's, it's weird to do a council meeting and not have shorts on.
Yeah. Okay, well, and we have no executive session, so I guess at that time, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Pape?
I'll make a motion, Mayor, that we adjourn.
And second, anybody?
I'll second that.
Bruce Caldwell?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Chris.
Meetings adjourned.